The next order of business is a ZBA recommendation. The application of Dr. Green Thumb Greenfield LLC for property located at 220, 228 Main Street, assessors, 51 lot 60, which is located in the general commercial zoning district for a special permit pursuant to sections 204.7, C21, and C23, 207.17, 208.3, and 208.4 of zoning ordinance in order to allow the operation of adult use marijuana retail establishment at this location. And is the applicant here to make a presentation? I think you, I think you may be muted.
I should know about this.
Yeah, yes, we are.
Yes, Steve Dracula.
Go ahead. And just. Please state your, your name and address for the record.
Go ahead, Justin.
I'm Justin Begon. I'm the owner of 220-228 Main Street in Greenfield.
Steve Dracula, the architect, 27 James Street, Greenfield.
Hey, Steve, do you want to share the screen to show drawings?
Yes, absolutely. So you need to give me control.
Assigned privileges.
And could I also have you spell your last name for me, please, Steve?
Sure. D R A K U L I C H.
Thank you. And Justin, can I have your last name spelled as well, please?
P A G A N.
Thank you.
Let's see, Steve.
Do I have control yet?
Yeah, see if you can, see if you can.
Okay, I'm going to try sharing. Oh, this looks like this is going to work. Share. Does everybody see the picture?
Yes, great, thank you.
Okay. So this is the old jewelry store on the corner of Chapman in Maine. And it's a two-story plus basement building. It's been vacant since the jewelry store moved out and the games store moved out. It's, I researched the building. I went back to 1910. I know that all three of the, of those buildings were there from that point forward. Wooden structure, a stone foundation, some brick sod at the front. Otherwise, it is vacant. We're, the intention is to make a marijuana retail establishment there for adult use marijuana. And we have some particular side issues that, that we have worked with the town about. In particular, that the building really occupies almost the entire site. So we have no place for a vehicle to park in a sort of a controlled condition. There's a, at the back of the building, and I'm gonna, I bet I can zoom in here. Let's see if I can. Looks like I can, but I'm not sure that you're going to be able to see. There's a shared driveway at the back that's used by the restaurant, the adjacent restaurant. And, but there's only about six feet of space that's really our property back there. Otherwise, there is a loading zone in front and of the building right now that is pretty frequently used. And so what we have come up with, let's see if I can just move around here a little bit. What we are proposing to do is to build a interior garage so that we can have the product delivered, you know, in a safe way. And so we're building a group, and you know, we're going to be lowering the floor, and I'll show you on the plans what we're planning to do. Lowering the floor down to grade and then take, opening up the sidewalk and the curb here to pour a new, a new driveway essentially. We're going to be doing that according to, you know, P or DPW, six-inch concrete mesh. And because it is also a sidewalk, we will make sure that we have the correct slopes to allow it to be a handicapped walk, sidewalk as well going across there. You can see the back there that there's, there's not much. There's some place for some mechanical equipment, and then there's a stairway at the back where the former residence upstairs was a former residential. It has an entrance at the front and entrance at the back. So there's a little bit of a stair back there. There is a EverSource buried transformer vault on the back corner. We have a, a brand-new Greenfield light pole right here. And so really, there was, we had to push these garages forward to get around the transformer vault. I talked to EverSource. They, they declined to move their vault. So this is the furthest we can stay away from the corner. And we sort of worked this out with the city in a meeting. But part of what we need to do is we need to take over this existing loading zone out here in front. And so my, my proposal was really to take the loading zone, which is an active loading zone. I see it being used all the time, and move it down to in front of the the excavated basement of the building that was never built. And make that the loading zone, take out three parking places to do that. Obviously, we would, whatever we need to do to move meters, to do re-striping, to do sidewalk repair, where signs and meters are being done, we're, are, we're proposing to do that. I have, I know that those were comments from the DPW, and so they are now included on, on this official drawing. So to that effect. Let me go. So inside there's, we're, we're providing two spaces, a two-garage Sallyport with two separate garage doors for a couple of reasons. One is just to keep the, the scale of the garage doors on the elevation a little bit reduced, but also because the structure is such that we really can't get a too-wide garage in there. But so the south, so we access across the sidewalk. And so backing into the Sallyport, figured that that was the best. And then that accesses the sort of the back of house of, of the dispensary. So at this, as far as the dispensary goes, go out a little bit. We're going to reuse in some fashion the existing ramped entryway. Until we get a, right now, I'm showing the entryway and the sort of required, you know, vestibule, people come in through the door here, which is open. This door is controlled by security check-in. So you show your ID and you go into the dispensary. We're going to be looking at this to see if he, I mean, this ends up being a little bit of a trash collection spot right now. I think that's mainly because nobody is in there, but I'm hoping that we'll be able to come up with a different arrangement that, that reduces the, the amount of that exterior ramped area. Inside, standard display. We're, we're keeping the windows, or we're not keeping them. We are redoing the, the windows on the sort of the old games, Greenfield Games side to sort of look more like what's on the corner now. I'll show you on the elevation what the plan is for that. So that we get as much natural light as possible, but we also have to have controlled visual access. So the, everything except a sort of a clear story, lights are, will, will be translucent. So the point-of-service checkout at sort of the back, there will be a display of material. The, the material be, the, that will be purchased is behind the counter. Otherwise, we have sort of all the CCC requirements with a vault storage of used outdated material along with sort of a staff room, workroom. And then.
I'm Shelley, Steve Lobell, contractor.
That's really bad. Sorry about that. Um. The staff room and a workroom and the only access to the basement, right now, there is an access, there's a stair going up to the second floor at the back, a stair going up to the second floor at the front, which are totally isolated from the dispensary. There's currently a stair going down into a basement, which we are going to block off and build a new stairway into the basement directly sort of off the garage Sallyport. And that is the only exit that, or the only entrance to the basement. The basement is only going to be, it's a mechanical basement. It's really not fit for anything else. It's where the, the sprinkler fire hose connections are, for the sprinkler connections and the, you know, the services, and that's where we intend to put our mechanical equipment. Upstairs, whoopsie daisy. Go back to here. Sorry. Okay, upstairs, we're not planning on doing anything with the second floor at this point. I mean, there's, there's some, some things that will need to be addressed if anything is done there, but it's going to be not really occupied. The basement is going to be really all mechanical. Wow. Out of control. There we go. But it shows what we've got to do. So we're going to have to sort of build a wall for our openings, for our foundation, and either fill that in or restructure it so we can come in. The difference in grade is about three feet between the floor and the sidewalk. So that's what we've got to cut out. Just to show you, this is essentially what we're thinking about, that what it's going to be in as a section through there. So maintaining the grade, you know, building in, it's, it's small-sized. We don't have a whole lot of room there. We're really going to be basically only be able to have a compact car make deliveries, but that's really not a problem for what our product is. So. On the exterior, you can see what we're planning to do with the front, you know, you know, just sort of clean, clean up this, the, the elevations on the corner. Have it match with what we're going to be doing for the dispensary. The sort of the darker blue shows translucent glass so that you can't see in. The clear glass is, is six foot four above the floor line of the, above the sidewalk line. So it's sort of out of sight. And we're going to sort of build a new architrave along this entrance, just to sort of tie the whole building together. Because right now, these are quite different looking. And we're going to have that wrap around, sorry. Onto Chapman Street. So we wrap that around. We're going to mimic the windows for, in the sort of front space, and then mimic the windows in the sort of a staff room, workroom from behind, which will of course be secured. You can see the two garage doors again, trying to break those down to keep the scale a little bit less intrusive. Material on the side is pretty much going to stay the same. Right now, it's a couple of different clapboard widths with a stone foundation. Other than that, we've got our lighting plan is we, we're going to have, I mean, for, for the X, I'm just obviously just showing the exterior lighting here, but we'll have sign lights for what we're proposing for sign location, which will be over the dispensary window. And then otherwise, lighting around the perimeter that will be on a, you know, timer and motion. And along with some lighting inside the, the recessed area where our ramp is. And then we have cameras everywhere. This was a plan that we've met with the chief two, maybe three times, have worked out this plan. And as, and I think that he is probably set, probably hasn't sent in the letter yet, but, but we have sent him the final plan of this. So I do need to go back because there was one thing, kind of an important issue that I didn't talk about. And that is that we're not really, as of right now, we're not really using the full building first floor plan. And we have a, a very small piece cut out for the front that we're calling future commercial. We're really not sure what that's going to be. It could be something that is rented out to a, an appropriate usage, or it may be something that we plan to use in the future differently. Is there any questions?
Um. Thanks, Steve. So is, so are, are you playing as, are you, as the purchase, is the building going to be purchased for this? You're going to own the building? Okay.
I, I think they already do.
Okay.
Are you guys still there?
Yeah, we, we do own the building. I apologize.
Okay. Um, so I, I have a question about that, about that entry ramp on the front door. Does that, does that, does that slope up right now?
Yeah, it does. It's, it's maybe a little bit less than a handicapped pitch. So, and there's a fair, you know, it's all concrete. There's a steel structure underneath it.
So is it ramp, so it ramps up at more than, what is it, eight percent is, is the handicap ramp?
Yes, it's, it's a little bit less than a one in twelve. So, but it's not, it's, it's not a one in twenty. So one in twenty is a sidewalk walk slope, which you don't have to have handrails or anything like that.
Right. So, so you, you'll be putting handrails in.
We're going to have, we're going to have to do handrails. You know, just, I can't, I can't do one in twenty. I'd be using up too much of the building.
You have the landing space in front of that door?
Excuse me?
You have the, the landing space required in front of that door?
Um, I will. So yeah, it's an interesting thing because this is something I discovered in the AAB code, which says that you do not have to have a flat space in front or at a doorway if the doorway is an automatic door. And that's sort of the plan. So, so without.
So you, it's a push-button operated door?
It wouldn't be a push button. It would be a motion, you know, for egress. So, I mean, it'd be a motion sensor. It would sense you and open the door.
And so that's how you get away with like not having enough clearance on the door swing side?
I mean, again, you know, I mean, I, I, I'm hoping to revisit this when we get to, you know, into the design.
Yeah.
Because I, what I really want to do is eliminate, I'm going to zoom in here. I want to eliminate this deep canyon that goes in and make it more like, you know, have, have the landing out here, the flat landing here. If I need another flat landing on the other side of the door, we'll do that. And then we'll, we'll use a ramp to get us up to this. Now I got to push these things back. I will a little bit if I have to, or I may, depending on whether I can get the building inspector to agree, is just put a set of doors across here. If he buys that section of the AAB that allows us not to have the flat spot in front. So.
Right. I guess you're going to be spending enough on this project that the building has to be, you know, fully ADA compliant.
Yes.
And otherwise, you got to get a variance or something.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean, the, you know, the minimal, minimum AAB is going to be, you know, entrance and bathroom anyway.
Right.
And so we got to get in and we do have, we have access, we have an accessible public bathroom too. So.
Yep. Okay.
And what I always love about that too is that the other, the third thing is an accessible telephone booth. I think that's still in the regulations. So. Nobody's ever mentioned it, but it's, I think it's still there.
Yeah. Um. Let's see. How, how frequently are deliveries made?
John and Justin?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time? I kind of broke off a little bit.
I'm just wondering how frequently deliveries are made.
Um, it's really scheduled based. It's kind of hard to really say per se on how many deliveries, you know, listen, I would love a delivery every day if I could. I mean, business is doing well for everybody. Um, boy, I, I, I really can't give you an accurate answer, but I want to say at least three times a week, if I could guess as of right now.
Okay.
But it's not, it's not necessary. It's not, at this point, three times a day, I get, is the, is the issue.
Not at all.
Well, do you, so do you, is there really a need for a double Sallyport?
We are, we're doing a double Sallyport so that we have a standby vehicle at this point.
You know, and just to chime in on that, it, it's all about workflow. You know, you don't want to have one car. And then let's just say somehow, some way, you know, our one car is there and you have a delivery truck that pulls in. You know, you just kind of want to have that space just to keep the workflow going and honestly, not to cause traffic. Because I know one of the biggest things that even the police chief told us was that, you know, Main Street can be very busy. Um, and that's just one thing. We just don't want to cause traffic. So we just thought having two side ports would just be the best thing for everybody in terms of just workflow.
Okay. Charles, yeah, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to go around and let, and let folks ask questions, George.
Well, I just wanted to follow up on what you were just, the, the question of the double port there. So the only use of that would be for deliveries, correct?
Yes.
So I'm trying to understand why, unless you had simultaneous vehicle deliveries, because you wouldn't keep a vehicle in there that's not being, I mean, once the delivery is made, I assume the vehicle would exit. And so it wouldn't be kept in there. So it would be, uh, it would be vacant at that point. I'm just trying to understand as Charles was asking, the need for two.
The, it, it could very well be there overnight, you know, in the vehicle, the vehicle could be parked there. The delivery vehicle could be housed there, I think, is, was the issue.
So the vehicle would be housed there, and then while it's sitting there, another vehicle is going to come and need to make a delivery?
Possibly.
Charles, Emily has her hand up.
Oh, I can't, oh, yeah. So I, because.
Do you want me to unshare, share her? I could, I could do that.
That's okay. I'm just going to, I think I'll go, I'll go down the line. And so Emily, questions, concerns?
Uh, so I'm, I'm asking about the double Sallyport as well. So then I was wondering if the, if the company itself would ever own a company car that would have to be housed there whole time, full-time?
Yeah, yes, yes, they would. Um, I'm not sure if Steve brought up to date. So on one aspect of the building, I should say the storefront, we're going to have a, a retail storefront. And the other side is that we're, we're, we actually got approved from the city for a delivery service. But we just have not yet received a state license for it yet. So that's why we haven't really gone in depth about the delivery service. But we are applying for delivery service. I think that's what was said, and I apologize for that. So that's why we're going to have two vehicles there. It's going to be one vehicle for a delivery service in which I'm hoping we can start applying for our state license for that. And the second thing, we're just because, like I said, we didn't want to cause traffic. So we want to have an extra space so we don't, so we have enough time just for deliveries that come in for the retail as well.
So how many cars are you thinking that you're going to have delivery service?
Just, just, just one, just one, I would hope. Um, maybe two at max, but by times, it's all about schedule based. So let's say one to two max, I would say.
Okay, thank you. And so, um, the cars that would be doing the delivering, we were talking about that they would need to be the compact size, right, to be able to
Correct.
fit in there. In your experience, I guess, in this business, are you seeing that most delivery vehicles are, you know, I'm used to businesses where there's like the trailer trucks and the, the bigger ones?
Can I be quite frank with you? Um, I think delivery service is, is brand new. So I know that most cities actually aren't even allowing delivery services as of yet because they haven't figured out the regulations. And I think Greenfield is actually one, one, I want, I don't want to say one of the first, but maybe top ten cities that actually have incorporated the bylaws for delivery service. We do have another, we do have another facility in Holyoke, and actually Holyoke is not even, you know, speaking about delivery service as yet. So I do know two companies, one of them actually based near Boston, and they're actually using compact cars as well. So if, when you go, when you go into thoughts of trailers or, you know, bigger trucks, you know, you're really thinking about wholesale or bigger quantity.
Right. So my question, let me clarify there was, let me clarify there. So I, I meant not for, not for in-town's delivery service, which I agree with you. They're going to be called pack cars. But my question was pertaining to delivery to the dispensary, to the marketplace itself, from whatever wholesaler you're getting it from.
Yeah. So we, we actually have encountered, they're not really doing trucks, but they're, we're encountering that they're mostly, I don't want to say everybody, but the ones that we have spoken to. One is Jamaco. They're actually using like Escalade or bigger, bigger, like not kind of smaller than Escalade, but like nice-sized trucks. Um, so they're not really going for the big trucking, you know, Amazon kind of delivery.
So you've got, you have eighteen foot three of depth in that garage, a parking space of eighteen. An average car is like sixteen. So you're, you're not going to be able to, you, you're going to be limited pretty much to maybe a van tops. Right? Is that what you're supposing? Yes.
It, it, you know, it is, it is what it is. Those are the requirements. That's, that's so we can fit in this building without really take, tear, you know, doing more demolition work in here that would be a little extreme. There's there's a lot of very large pillars in the basement that we should not be moving. And so this is what we can do. And so we're, the vehicles will just have to, you know, vehicles that they, they choose are going to be, have to fit the garage that we can do.
Right. Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, thanks, Charles. And I think some of my questions are kind of starting to be answered here. But I, just, just to clarify. So when we're looking at this plan and we're talking about a delivery vehicle entrance, we are talking about vehicles owned by the dispensary to push product out via delivery, not to take receipt of product coming into the business. The loading zone would be where that would be happening. Is this correct? I feel like we're kind of talking about deliveries interchangeably a little bit. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the purpose of this garage bay.
The stuff going out and the stuff coming in will both go into the garage.
Unless it's coming in a box truck, at which point it would use the loading zone. Again, listen, here's my concern is that we're Again, listen, here's my concern is that we're getting rid of three parking spaces for the public to create two parking spaces. Free fleet and creating a little bit of like kind of traffic that's going to be backing up and reversing right off of the corner of Main Street. And I would assume the thinking is, oh, well, you know, we can get rid of the three parking spaces because there's a, a lot. Feet away, but I guess the question for me then is if we've got a brand new loading zone that we've eradicated parking spaces to put there. And there is indeed parking a few feet away, why can't this delivery fleet park their cars in the municipal lot? Is there some kind of a law around actually getting products from the business?
Yes.
Do you know what I mean? Is it about transporting products down the road into the car to then deliver or something?
Yes.
That's it right there, Steve.
Yes, the short answer, talk to the chief. The, the answer is yes, it has to be done in a Sally port. Either inside or, you know, the way, uh, the current one done is in a, uh, enclosed, um, fenced area. Uh huh. Close fenced area is what we would have done if we had the room to do it. That's what we're doing other places. So yes.
It's not possible. Yeah, courier can just walk down to Chapman Street with a locked suitcase full of products to then go deliver. Okay.
So, so who is using the relocated loading zone? What, what business uses that?
Um, I've seen UPS there. I think that, um, uh, Taylor's gets deliveries there. There's the, um, the, um. There's a, you know, Bonnie B's on the corner gets deliveries there. The, um, the outlet store is right across the street, couple of bars. So it's, it's pretty much used.
Okay.
That's why we, we suggested not just getting rid of it, but just relocating it because it was, it looked like it was being used.
So there's no actual parking spaces in front of the building where you're putting the Sally port?
Well, we, we went back and forth on this with, um, you know, planning and with, uh, the mayor. And it just didn't seem like that was going to be, certainly we couldn't do it. You know, between here, the corner and our first parking place. Potentially, could we get a spot here? Could, maybe, so. Yeah, see, this is that, the driveway for what's left of, you know, that little spot behind and here's the. The EverSource Transformer Vault.
I'm gonna just bring up a Google Earth shot here. For folks. So this is where the new Sally port's going, right here, correct?
Yes, right where that car is in front of that car.
And the current loading zone is now here?
Yeah, it's, that's about it.
And then we're moving, we're moving it down to here to where these three spaces are.
That's correct.
And then, and then I guess, I guess in some ways you could, it, it might be safer to have a loading zone down here than, than up here just because it's further away from the intersection. And on the rare occasion where you're may get, having deliveries made, cars will have to back up like this. Into the building. So it's a little, it's a little bit. That's, it'll be a little tricky.
We will put, put up ballards.
Any other comments from folks on the board? David?
I'm reluctant to continue the discussion about the Sally ports, but I just wanted to take another slice at it. Uh, this, uh, is probably would be up to probably the police department or someone else. But, uh, I walked around that area yesterday, uh, and the cars that come, uh, are very quickly around the corner onto Chapman Street. Uh, and although it's not, not a lot of pedestrians walking on that side of Chapman Street, uh, there are some, uh, who walk along there. Uh, and I'm just a little concerned. I don't know what the answer is. I'm concerned about, uh, cars backing up over a public sidewalk into a building. Uh, and then coming out, uh, which would, I would think would be kind of blind. Uh, you're wondering what's going on, uh, on the street and on the sidewalk. And I'm just wondering whether, I don't know, mirrors or some kinds of warning signs, uh, I've just.
I've been thought about, um, warning buzzers.
I'm sorry?
Lights flashing or something like that, like you'll see.
Are you saying you're considering that?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
So where would those lights be attached? Where they, where would they be mounted?
They'd be on the side of, I, I thought he even drew them, but maybe I didn't. Let's look at the elevations. There we go. Pedestrian flashing warning lights, so.
You have to reshare your screen. You have to reshare your screen, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or maybe I have to give you permission again.
Okay. Yeah, they're on the elevations.
I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give everybody permission to share their screen. Okay.
All right, so here's the garage doors and I did put something in here. undefined, except to say pedestrian flashing warning lights. Something recognizing the, the issue that you, you know, brought up. So I'd, I'd like to, when the door, when the garage doors go up, you know, I would like to have some audible and visual.
Thank you. George?
Yeah, I appreciate, um, David, you bringing up, I'm more concerned for pedestrian safety with the vehicles exiting. Because like you say, it could be blind if people are familiar with NAPS on Maple Street. I've been pretty nervous walking by there before. And, uh, the other question I had, because it is, is people are saying it's a, it's a tight roadway and, uh, it's quite busy. Um, and I wondered if there were any provisions being made for the direction of exiting. It would seem like a right turn only would make much more sense from a point of view of safety.
Um, I think we would be fine with that, you know, condition. So, I mean, that's kind of what I imagined we would be doing. So anyway, so.
It's so close to the intersection, it would seem tough.
Yeah, no, it would be very tough.
Say, another parking question I have, and this may just be, um, an artifact of, of, on the, um, front page viewer. Um, that's the, actually the site plan. It shows the angled parking on Main Street.
Yeah.
And it lists two, um, handicap spaces. And Eric Torg in his report noted, there's, there's one there now currently, right?
Yes, those are all existing, yes. They don't, they don't have signs. I mean, there's some deficit. Um, you know, they don't, it doesn't have all the trappings of, you know, what's required for handicapped. But it has, it does have the symbol and, and the side aisle.
Right, it doesn't have a.
Intention was not to do anything out there.
That's what I, that, I mean, that's public parking. You're not.
We're not.
Proposing anything regarding that.
No, no.
Okay, yeah, thank you. The other thing I wanted to check, I mean, um, I know we're waiting, uh, and it's, it's more essential that it. Be ready for the ZBA's review, the, um, letter from the chief of police. Um, but I was double checking, because, um, uh, with Eric earlier, because he couldn't be here, that, um, the, um. Provision in the ordinance that to be no use of the product on the premises would not apply to the sidewalk. That's public space. That's not your premises. Um, and it would be, I think, equivalent to someone drinking in front of a liquor store, you know, it's not your responsibility. But I, I didn't know if that is something that in your discussions, especially because this is a new phenomenon compared to, you know, alcohol use. I wonder if that's something, uh, you had had a, um, dialogue with the chief about, since we can't see the letter.
Um, did we talk about that, Justin? I'm not, I'm not really sure that that ever came up.
Actually, there's a, there's a, there's a bylaw, um, I should say a rule in the CCC where you're not allowed to have, um, any smoking 250 feet from the premise.
Oh. Thank you. I, I wasn't aware of that. How? And, and what would you do to, um, uh, inform, uh, customers of that? How, how does that work?
To be, to be truthful, um, what we, what we usually do is that the fact that, you know, we have a security guard there. And we actually don't let you open up the bag or actually say the, I don't want to say the gift bag, but the bag that, you know, we put the product in. And we make sure, you know, if anyone does for some, for seeking reason, opening up in the store or outside the store, we have a security guard right by the Sally port. Or the front door though, you know, just remind people, hey, listen, you have to go 250 feet before you can open up the bag.
Thank you. Uh, I also had a question, um, uh, about, um, uh, proposed hours of operation. I didn't think you had specified any. I wondered if you're, you're thinking about that?
Um, so that's a good question, actually. So I would like to do as early as possible. Um, from what I saw online is that most dispensaries were offering nine to 10. Um, I wasn't sure if that was the earliest and maybe if they could be open. But I would love to be, you know, first one's open, you know, last one's, last one to close, you know, early rush hour and then late rush hour. That's, that's ideally, you know, that's ideally how you'd like to do it.
I thi- I think the, the ordinance in Greenfield says nothing but before seven or after 10 PM, but.
That's correct, yeah.
So.
So I would like to be open at seven, 7:10 AM and I'll close at 9:59 PM. If, if that's doable.
Thanks.
Any other comments from folks?
Yeah, I arrived a little bit late, so perhaps it was covered. Um, but my question would be specific to the proposed sign on the front of the building and more specifically the lighting. Um, I see three different light fixtures proposed, um, in the bottom of, of this. Um, I just, I'm not clear on which one would be for the illumination of the sign.
Sure, I'll show you that one. It's not here. Um, I think you have it on your drawings. It's not on my drawing because it's, uh, like, well, it's a technical thing. It is a, um, it's an LED that's on, that's on a standoff arm shining back on the building.
Okay.
Uh, they're very small. It's about the size, the, the whole light is about the size of an iPhone. Um, so it's a very small LED. I think on your plans have it.
Is that lighting fixture, uh? Z? No.
W.
Um.
Yeah.
It's W.
W.
Okay. Um, and then, thanks for clarifying that, board. Um, the other one was, is actually specific to the sign itself. Um, with the exterior lights, we should anticipate there not being any, uh, illumination of, from the sign itself. Am I correct in that?
That's the intention.
And the dimensions of the sign being proposed are those that are on the schematic itself and what would the sign actually say?
Um, the, the size of the sign will be whatever we can, you know, whatever the maximum allowable size, uh, for zoning is. And which I think is what we have listed on there and what the sign will say is undetermined at this point. But we're going to have to, you know, when, once we get to that point, we have to go through, uh, you know, zoning for the sign anyway. For the, through the building department, so.
If I may. Uh, I have one more question regarding the interior, what I believe is an interior stairwell. Um, the, the picture of what is the second floor with no changes.
Yeah.
Looks to be a middle stairwell there. And I, I believe, I, which direction are those stairs?
You know what? That's, that stairwell is actually pretty interesting and it's not a, uh, it's not a down stairwell. It's actually an up stairwell as if it's going to the roof. But it is all closed in, so I don't even, I can see the underside of it. But I actually can't get to that stairway, so. I don't know what exists, but it doesn't go down. It only goes up.
Okay.
Charles.
George?
It's just about the, um, appearance of the west side of the building and particularly the, um. Garage doors, because it's such an unusual, uh, feature in this area. Um, what would be the, um, types of materials or coloration as compared with the rest of the facade?
I think it would be something, I mean, it's going to be an insulated metal door. Um, number one, there will be no windows in it, number two. And, uh, it will be something that will blend in rather than stand out.
I would think it would have to be. A little more secure than your average garage door, right? It has to be a security door.
Yeah, well, I think, well, yeah.
A roll-up door?
I don't think, I don't know. I, I sort of hate to have that. You know, a roll-up door kind of a look. But, um, I'm sure I can get a. You know, a secure sectional overhead door, which is, to me is a little less institutional looking.
Well, what is, so what are the, what is, what is the, uh, CCC say you need for, for door security at your Sally ports?
Um, you, you know, I mean, for a, for Sally port, most Sally ports are on the outside of the building and all you need is a gate.
Right.
So there's not anything specific related to that.
So your, so your primary layer of security is going to be in, actually inside behind those doors. What's?
Right, the security, the security is, is keeping the doors down and locked. And then there's cameras and, um, you know, all kinds of door, door control and operators and, um. You know, for every door has, uh, I mean, this is, you know, this is probably going to be the staff door on the side. So we have, you know, some sort of a, either swipe or a biometric read or something like that. There's obvious, there's always the camera right over these doors. There's cameras. There's cameras, so you, right here, just go out a little bit. I'll show you what the, always it is. You always try to get crossing, uh, uh, cameras so that it's always, everything is covered. So for in this case, I've got a camera looking this way, a camera looking this way, a camera looking this way and this way. So everything is, is, you know, covered and that's pretty much on all sides of the building. So. This, that, all of this was worked out with the chief.
Okay. Um, if any, if nobody has anything else, just to, to add at the moment, I'm just gonna read to the record the correspondences that we've got. And then if you want to talk more after that, that's fine. It's from, uh, from Eric Torog. Zoning, to the zoning deals, but we get to read it. Uh, review comments for the proposed retail establishment at 220 to 28 Main Street. Um, the board is inclined to approve the application. Can anybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Um, if the board is inclined to approve the application, then the Department of Planning and Development recommends the following conditions of approval. The applicant shall obtain an approval letter on the proposed security system from Police Chief Robert Hague. And submit a copy to the Department of Planning and Development within 20 days of approval. Delivery vehicles shall be limited to box trucks or smaller truck or trailer trucks shall be prohibited. Uh, zoning district, um, central commercial CC, the above referenced parcels located within the central commercial CC zone district. Properties, the north, south, east and west are also zoned at CC. Proposed use marijuana retailer is allowed by special firm of the site plan. Review and approval from the ZBA within the CC district, the applicant has submitted complete application to the cannabis control system. Uh, commission for marijuana retail establishment dislocation. Uh, the Greenfield, City of Greenfield through the mayor's offices entered into a host community agreement with Dr. Green from Greenfield LLC dated April 28th, 2021. Project performance held the required community outreach meeting on June 16th, 2021. Um, required buffer to defer, to differ, to determine conformance with section 207.17. Of the zoning ordinance and the Board of Health Regulations relative to marijuana establishments, just to measure. Of the zoning ordinance and the Board of Health regulations relative to marijuana establishments, a distance measure, a distance measurement to the nearest K through twelve public school was done using the city's G I S. System, the K through twelve public schools are located within the two hundred fifty or five hundred feet, um, subject with property. Um, the security plan has been submitted to Police Chief Hague, but has not yet been approved. Um, site access parking, the preliminary entrance to the post facility is from Main Street. Off-street parking is not required for the C C district. There were three existing on-street parking spaces in front of two twenty-two twenty-eight Main Street to include one A D A space. Submitted site plan shows four parking spaces in front of the building, which includes two A D A spaces. Davis Chapman Street Municipal Parking Lot is only a block away. There's an existing loading zone along the side of the building on Chapman Street that's proposed to be moved south beyond the building in front of the existing post. Uh, foundation at thirteen Chapman Street. Purpose of the relocation of the loading zone is for access to the alley. Um, to the Sallyport for the facility. Meeting was held with the applicant, the applicant's architect, Steve Georguklich, Drakealuch, sorry Steve.
I, I answered anything.
Like me. Mayor's Chief of Staff and the mayor during, which the mayor agreed to the proposed relocation of the existing loading zone. Um, hours of operation are not determined, although we've got inkling on this conversation. Dimensional setbacks, there are no um, dimensional setbacks. We meet all dimensional setbacks requirements, the zoning ordinance. Minimum landscape opening space requirement under current standards of, of zoning ordinance for the central commercial district is fifteen percent. Currently, the site is completely covered with impervious surface, zero percent open space. However, since there is a redevelopment project, the standard does not need to be met. The applicant is not proposing any new landscaping. There are two, there are two existing tree pits along the front of the building. Uh, exterior lighting plan has been submitted. There are two existing decorative light poles along the frontage of two twenty-two twenty-eight Main Street. And that, uh, that light the property as well as the one existing decorative light fixture along the pole fronted on Chapman Street. The applicant has not submitted any details for signage. Um, any proposed signing will, will have to go through the Z B A. That's what Eric, so, um. Yeah, I guess, I guess what, what's, what's most important to think about are the recommendations that he's making here about the, the letter from the police chief. And limiting the size of, of delivery vehicles. And those are sort of limited, you know, inherently by the size of the Sallyport. On. Review comments from the D P W, Alan Torog, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Department of Public Works has reviewed the proposed site plan and special permit application from Dr. Green from Greenfield LLC to allow the operation of an adult's use marijuana establishment. This address. Access from Chapman Street. The applicant is proposing a Sallyport for two vehicles off Chapman Street. This will require an access permit from the D P W. The applicant will be required to replace the existing concrete sidewalk. The minimum, minimum six inch thick sidewalk that meets A D A standards for proposed ingress, egress is located. Currently, there is a truck loading zone on Chapman Street in front of the subject building. The applicant is proposing to move this further north, which will eliminate three parking spaces. The D P W does not have an issue with this. All proposed improvements and changes within the street layout should be the responsibility of the applicant, including relocating existing signs and removing existing parking meters and posts. Which shall be salvaged by the D P W after you require permits or excavation, trench and access permits. Um. The. Think the last comment we have is from the Board of Health, Jennifer Hoffman, um, Health Director dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. Recommendations, the Health Department submits the following questions to the zoning Board of Appeals regarding the application for adult use marijuana retail establishment. In accordance with the M G L chapter one eleven, section thirty-one and thirty-one C. Uh, nuisance and noisome trades and three ten C M R seven hundred and seven point one D E P P regulations. For air and noise pollution now, the department requests clarification for five hundred foot uh, radius of the business. So how is the air dispersed outside with vents or chimneys? Along is the ventilation system on and what hours? How much odor is expected to be released to the outside? Would there be any particulate matter dispersed to the outside from the system? If so, please describe. How intense are the odors expect, um, expected to be? None, very light, moderate, strong, very strong? What percent, percentage of odor reduction? To the, what percent? What percent percentage of odor reduction to the exterior of the building? I guess they're asking. How, how, how much will it be lowered? Is a power, is a power venting system being used? If so, plans would need to be, uh, would be needed to determine noisy emission mitigation. What is the noise emission um, decibel level for the filtration system? Are there fans or filtration system passive? Um, I guess, I, so are, are any of those, um, are any of those questions applicable to this? Are, are, are there odors that come out? And if so, how are they being um?
No. The, I mean, odors are a big issue in cannabis. Growing. Um, and maybe in processing, but not in the dispensary. I mean, all, all of the, you know, so that, I mean, that's really where it. You know, the terpenes are released is during the grow because they're, the smell, the marijuana smell um, attracts insects to pollinate. Or it repels uh, other insects that it doesn't want to have, eat it. So it's really, those, all those questions which are all valid are really about. The grow facilities and not really dispensaries. Dispensaries, the product is, is packaged or is in a, you know, a jar and contained. So it's really, you, you know, it's not really the same thing. So it's a retail, you know, there's small quantities and they're all packaged, so.
Okay. Um. Good issue to think about. George?
Thank you. Um, yeah, I, as we're going through those, I was thinking of the Commission on Display Access and we didn't have uh, reports from them. But going back to your early questions, Charles, about the, the ramp. And uh, Mr. Draculich, your comment about not needing to have a flat area if uh, there's an automatic door. And I remember as you were describing it, you talked about it being motion detector for egress. And so I'm wondering from people coming up the ramp, how, how would it work?
The, the, the front, the door, the, the, the outside door that's on the ramp is, um, is a free open door. So when the establishment is open, that door, you can go in that door and, or you can leave through that door by motion. So it's, it's the door that goes from that vestibule. And there's a, there is a, there's a flat landing at the top of that. And so the, the idea is that that's where, that's where the access control is. So that's where the person in the wheelchair is waiting, so.
Steve, could you go back to your plan and just?
Sure.
Point that out?
So this is flat up here.
Right.
Okay.
And that, this is just the ramped portion.
So that ramp portion has no landing though, so that door has to be motion activated so that?
Yes.
Wheelchair comes up and they don't have to. Okay. There's no, there's, there's no chance of? People on the street. Activating that motion sensor?
Um, no.
You have to come, you gotta come down that throat.
Yes, yeah. You can, you can, you, you know, any more motion sensors have, are, have, are pretty, um, sense. You can arrange them so that you, you know, it won't detect you until you're within like three feet, so. Suggestible.
Okay.
Charles, Dave has his hand up, I don't know if you can see.
Um, no, I couldn't see that. Um, thanks, George. Uh, Dave?
As a matter of curiosity, I'm wondering if you had any contact with any of the butters?
Um. Uh, answer, no.
So we actually uh, held our community outreach already. Um, a few, a few people came, but not many. I want to say about five. And any question anyone had, you know, uh, we spoke to them, um, answered any questions I was ready to. I'm not gonna lie though, I, I don't really check Facebook too much, but I actually went on it the other day and I have like eight messages from, I guess, residents and um. That live over there and they're all are ready to, you know, get going and ask me if they can resmit their, their, submit their resume. So I actually accepted a few resumes. So I guess word is coming out, so I guess that's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
And that, in that little vestibule there, Steve, do you have like? The front approach required distance for a front approach of a door like that? Door swing?
That, that was the, you might have missed that earlier part, uh, discussion. Um, there's actually. If, if a door i- in the uh, A A B or, you know, the uh, state uh, accessibility. Um, if a door is an automatic door, it doesn't require that.
So a person in a wheelchair has to sort of get into position and then get themselves in the correct direction to go through that door and then they press the opener. And then they're.
They don't have to press the opener, it's a motion. So they just approach the door and the door opens.
Don't you need like a, a five-foot circle within that space that's free of the door swing for, to, 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 um. To maneuver around in that space to, to move the wheelchair around the, the door as it's opening?
The, the doors, the doors, the, the swinging that I show is the emergency access, the breakaway door. These are sliding doors. They're, they're not swinging doors, they're sliding doors. That's just, every sliding door has an emergency egress push. So that's all that's showing. That's, that's confusing. I'm sorry, you know, that's one of the things that.
No, that's like, that's a game changer for me, Steve. I didn't know those were sliding doors.
Yeah, no, they're totally sliding doors. Yeah, I'm sorry about that, because otherwise it'd be a mess, but yeah. Has an emergency push, kick out.
Okay.
Helpful.
Any other comments from folks before uh? Start thinking about making a motion here?
I think so.
Um, I mean, my big concern is really vehicles entering and exiting the Sallyport. Interior layout is, is fine, it's not really our issue. Sounds like the, the A D A entrance is gonna be addressed with motion sensor and door openers. So. Um. You know, it's a, it's a busy street. Cars um, coming in both directions and coming around the corner. Limited visibility as you pull out, if you're, if you're, if you're a delivery person, as you're pulling out of that. Limited visibility for pedestrians and then as you're backing into it, um, just again, potential sort of traffic congestion.
Something that Eric and I talked about as we're sort of figuring this out was, you know, the possibility of, of striping this area. You know, like you would see in, in front of Big Y or something like that. You know, just to sort of keep the cars uh, out of that lane as they go around the corner. It's something we would do if that would make everybody feel better, but.
I mean, that might be helpful. How is it, so there's a loading zone there now, so people are used to having trucks parked there and having to navigate around them, is that true?
Yep.
I mean, throughout the day, yeah. Like I'll go down that street and one time there'll be plenty of space and then another time there's E P S truck there.
The striping doesn't sound like a bad idea. What, what do folks think of that?
I, um. I don't know if it's necessary, it sounds pretty unesthetic, to be honest, on a public street and.
That's why we didn't show it.
And I, I think even though people take the turn quickly, it's always been a tight street. I think people tend to be a little cautious sitting down there.
That's true, and the fact that the deliveries are, are there, they're only happening a few times a week at the most. Means that it's not like cars pulling in and out of there at all times of the day.
And the vehicles sound like they're small enough, it'll have a pretty tight turning radius as compared with, you know, a truck having to maneuver.
My truck would never make that. No way. Well, I'd never be able to park in there, period, but maybe sideways.
Does anybody, does anybody feel like um, crafting a motion and then we can um, sort of figure out what kind of conditions we might want to put on here? Recommendations to the Z B A um. In, in a, in a. During a discussion session after the motions have been made?
I make a motion to forward a positive recommendation onto the Z B A, provided that we, that uh. A, an approval is provided by the Chief of Police of the City of Greenfield.
Daddy, just as, as a, as a point of order before you got here, I raised David to a voting member.
Got it, okay.
He's gonna, he's gonna vote on this round.
Sure, sure.
But uh. So some, but that was an excellent start. Um, do you, do you, do you want to, want to take up from there? Somebody else wanna, wanna pick up where Daddy left off or start over again?
All right, I will make a motion to the Board a positive recommendation to the Z B A, provided that the Chief of Police approves. All aspects that we discussed tonight, as well as all of Mr. Torres' recommendations are incorporated.
Thank you. Is there a second to anyone?
I, I'd be happy to second. I, I just wondered if we should, um, I, I know the uh, proponent was uh, acceding to the idea. But uh, forward an additional recommendation of right turn only out of the Sallyport, just for safety reasons, but I don't know if that's necessarily not, but.
No, I think that's, I think that's a good idea.
I'd like to amend my motion to include um, that there also be the condition of a right turn only out of the Sallyport.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? I might like to add Eric's note about um, delivery vehicles. Being limited to box trucks or smaller, it may not really be an issue, but he did bring that up. So I'd like to add that. And then um, uh, is there, do we want to talk about the, um, the emergency lighting uh, for pede- safety lighting for pedestrians as cars are pulling out? I mean, Steve, is that something that's incorporated into your plans right now or is?
It's on, it's on the plan, yes.
Okay, so we don't have to, we don't have to sort of provision that.
But.
Um, so sorry, so Charles, we have the Chief of Police, Eric's recommendations, right hand only, and then his note regarding delivery vehicles, right?
Correct.
Well, his, just, sorry, his recommendations are only about the chief's letter and the delivery truck, so that's.
That's right. And, and we're adding the right turn only. Okay. So uh. Is that it? I'll do a, I'll do a roll call. Charles Roberts, I vote yes. Emily Ash?
Yes.
George Solimpsis?
Hi.
Dave Chichester?
Yes.
Okay. Mark Maloney?
Hi.
All right, there you have it. Thank you.
You guys.
Yeah.
And gals.
Sure, good luck with the Z B A.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Next week.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Good night.
Um, let me see. Oh, I think, yeah, okay, Steve.
Do I have to?
No, you, you, you released us.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
I know. Planning board training session on Main Street G I S by Daniel Hussey. Take it away, Natty.
Excuse me, Charles?
I may have to get, yes.
Sorry, just looking at the agenda, the next item is about the sign.
But I skipped over the signs. Okay, sorry about that, Natty. So deliberation on the proposed amendment to section two hundred six point seven signs of the zoning ordinance. Anybody develop any thoughts on that since our, our public hearing? George?
Yeah, I'd appreciated Julie Page's input and Eric referenced it in his email specific to. Section A, but in looking at. The actual introduction of it in C eighteen. The introduction of the dynamic display signs.
Right.
Because Ms. Page's references were, or, or comments were partly there to be referenced in a few different places. But. As I was looking at eighteen and reading it through a few times. I was realizing there might be some. I mean, one of the questions was, do we have to? Specify which zones it might be allowed in. But, but I know it also doesn't, as, as my rereading indicated, I, I had pictured these as freestanding signs. And I think the ones we've had and the ones we've heard proposed are all freestanding. But nothing here indicates that. So it looks like it could be potentially hanging on a wall. And I didn't know if that was our intention. And if it is freestanding, I don't know if, there's no indication that I saw as far as. Height limitations. And there are, for example, in limited commercial. There's one height limitation for freestanding signs. And in central commercial, there's a different height limitation for freestanding signs. So I was just wondering if in putting this new thing into place, we've missed some details unless I'm missing them now. So I'll, I'll be quiet so other people can educate me.
Emily, did you have your hand up?
I could be in the wrong area, George. Do not hold me to this, okay? But I saw in signs in general, just commercial district that it was. Fifteen feet.
Yeah.
So that's all signs.
But.
Free, freestanding.
Yeah.
Right. So, so this would fall under that, right? It's, it's, it's a freestanding sign. Falls under that fifteen foot height limit.
And are these necessarily freestanding signs?
Well, I guess they could be, since there, there, there's no reason why they couldn't be wall mounted.
I read us both.
And I just wanted to be clear as to our intention, our vision of how these would be used and.
Right. And then also like, what are the zones? Or do we want to, do we want to limit the use of these signs to certain zones? There's, you know, I, I, one of these signs just showed up the end of the G C C drive. I don't know if folks have seen it or not. But I don't think we'd want these, I, 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 we, would we, we, we might want to think about whether or not we would, you know, want these going up in sort of rural residential areas.
I, I will mention too, in that regard, that in the residential and semi-residential, it does, under D, it does specifically reference churches and public educational and other institutional uses.
What, what page is that on, George?
That's on the second page. At the top in D. So in those zones, certain institutions are treated distinctly. So.
So they can get. It's they can have two such signs. Is that, is that what they're saying here? We're saying?
Well, I'm just saying that they're treated distinctly. So that if in those areas, they might be treated anyway.
Well, I guess are there, are there, are there things that, that the board wants to consider about, about these electronic signs further? That, that, and, and, and talk about like location, for, for instance, that, that we like what zones are permitted in? Freestanding versus, versus wall mounted? Are the things that we might want to consider? Adding to this or, or amending in some way or another?
Just for a clarifying point. A illuminated sign, if wall mounted, would fall under the same guidelines as a normal sign. The only difference is that it's illuminated. So you sort of have, I wouldn't say the best of both worlds, but it has to meet the dimensional requirements. It has to be structurally sound or the building has to be structurally sound enough to hold the weight of that sign and it still has to conform with the lighting requirement, not in, not illuminating after eleven P M. or something like that.
Right.
So I guess my question really is, do we need to address whether or not it's freestanding or wall mounted? Based on my reading of, of this, it is, an illuminated sign is covered if it is wall mounted. Simply by the fact that we're regulating wall mounted signs.
Right. I mean, there's something, there's something about the aesthetic of.
Yes.
An analog sign versus a digital illuminated sign. And they're, they're not the same thing. They're, they're, they, they appear differently. They emit a different kind of light. They, they, they're, they're, they're not really the same thing. And so. George, you, you.
I was. Having that same reaction and, and again, trying to envision all the variables here. A wall mounted sign could be at varying heights. There's some approval for in this proposal to have second floor.
Right.
And so if any sign and that's approved, as Natty is saying, could be one of these digital, dynamic digital display signs. There would be some aesthetic concerns from me and, and, you know, I don't know how.
I mean.
Visualize that is, but, but I, I just wanted to be clear what we're envisioning as the possibilities of adding in a new option because I had been pictured as freestanding and not probably fifteen feet high. As Emily was reading, one, one zone would allow for freestanding signs. So I just, I'm just again wondering, are there some aspects of this we hadn't fully thought through or is it a minority concern?
The fact that they're dynamic and changing, I mean, you could, you could picture, you know, a brave new world for Greenfield where where, where multiple stores and buildings, upper story, electronic dynamic signs, they're all changing every thirty seconds. I mean, how would we feel about?
Hopefully there's businesses that are bringing in revenue that actually have those signs operating. That would, and that's the trade off there, but I hear, I hear the concern.
You know. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying, I'm not, I don't think it's necessarily business unfriendly to think about. Those, how, 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 those, those sorts of, those sorts of issues.
No, certainly not.
And I'm, I'm further wondering again, touching on Eric's point, if we do need to reconsider some elements of this, how much is it? Something that would be a substantive change that would have to go back through the.
Yeah.
The process, hearing process, but.
I mean, I think that, um, you know, I, I think that anything we're talking about right now would be considered a substantial. I talked to Eric about this today and we can, you know, vote, we, we, we could elect to withdraw the, the initiative and then, and then reconsider some of these issues and then hold a new public hearing and, and reinitiate if we felt like we wanted to.
Just to be clear, withdrawing the discussion on illuminated signs, but keeping all the other changes that were made, that's what I would, if, if we can't reach consensus on, and we could go on forever on the illuminated signs. But if we can't come to consensus on that, I would be of the opinion of keeping everything else illuminated signs for now have to go through a special permit process of their own to be determined later.
Yeah, I think it would be considered a substantive change and we'd have to, we'd have to withdraw and the, the initiative and sort of recraft that. George?
If I could, I, I, I'm not so entirely sure that would be considered a substantive change in the sense that. All the other things are changing existing. Portions of the ordinance. This is an entirely new section. So if you withdraw a section that hadn't existed, and so it still wouldn't exist, is that a substantive change?
Well, so.
If we only had an attorney.
So if we, if we, if we, if we take, if we take the dynamic L E D signs out of the equation.
You're turning away from your mic a little bit, I think, Charles.
If we pull the L E D signs out of this ordinance. They, are we, are we saying that they would still be governed by special permit? Because they're governed by special permit now and part of the, part of the, part of the. One, one of the goals of this is to take them out of special permit? Because I'm not quite clear on that.
So if we remove that from our recommendation, then yeah, they're still going to be governed by special permit. From our initiative.
What? I don't think we're eliminating a special permit aspect on this. What we're eliminating is, is having to go before the licensing board, right? I'm not sure about that.
A license, yeah. Well, oning projecting.
Do we have to take action on this tonight? Could we kick this to our next meeting in two weeks or do we kind of lose the window from the public hearing at that point?
Well, the city council is, is meeting, I think, next week on this.
I mean, listen, I would say that I, you know, I think that George is bringing up some interesting points and as somebody who drives by that G C C sign daily and thinks that I'm being pulled over by the police when I see this bright little flash in my rearview mirror daily. I am starting to kind of feel like some of these signs are. They're big and ugly and, and I do kind of wonder about the impact of them just like prolifer- proliferating throughout the community. That thing's huge. It's crazy bright and it's crazy distracting.
Yeah, and they did it and they didn't get a permit for it because it's, because it's on, because it's on state property. They did it and they're, they're. They're, they don't have to, they're, what's the word?
Exempt.
Exempt. That's the word.
Yeah, and right. And so plenty of spaces aren't going to have kind of the space to put up a sign that huge. But I guess I'm just saying like, I would rather slow and steady and maybe even the town be a wee bit inconvenienced as opposed to rushing this through right now. Because we just want to be done with it. Like, I don't know. I don't know how to move this forward. And I kind of feel like this is where it's sometimes helpful to have Eric at these meetings. Because he can really provide some context and some history and some understanding of zoning law that goes beyond what we can do. But I do think there's something to be said for considering like as many limits on these as possible. They are not like other signs. They are not some charming little downtown shingle on any level.
No, I, I agree. George?
Yeah, I appreciate Natty's point about would it be possible? And, and maybe we can confer with Eric and we could make perhaps a provisional vote or something like that. That if this, if taking C eighteen out of this proposal would not be a substantive change because it is just taking out something that was potential. That we approve the remainder. And then that could potentially go before the, the council. I, I don't know who decides. I mean, he said. He's, I think to us, if an Ardr. It was substantive and I guess we're a little mixed about that.
If we take C eighteen out, where are dynamic signs regulated?
I, I don't know that they currently are, are they?
Right. They, they would not be regulated at all. We still have to go, we still want, we still want to move this forward pretty quickly. I think we want to get to an answer on these, on these dynamic signs quickly. We still have to have a public hearing. It's a second round. It's a, it's a, it's a whole second process as opposed to just sort of doing it all at once and just, just delaying it. For, for, for the month or two. Yes, George?
But would it be possible to do what Daddy's suggesting and move the rest of it forward quickly and do what Mark's suggesting is slow and steady on the dynamic displays? And, and could Eric potentially have an opinion about that? So.
Right. I guess what I'm saying is that if we, if we elect, if we, if we, if we decided to withdraw the ordinance in its entirety right now then, then we would just, we would be holding second public hearing, which we would be having to do anyway for the, for the dynamic display signs. And then. It only comes before the city council once as opposed to having them consider the signed ordinance without the dynamic display signs and then looking at it again a couple of months later specifically. I mean, maybe, maybe that would be good because it puts it on people's radar. I don't know.
I, I would just say that in some ways makes more sense. I just appreciate Natty's eagerness to move the, you know, things that seem clear forward, but I, I can be persuaded either way, I think, procedurally.
I'm watching Mark's left eyebrow go up and down and something, he's thinking something. I, I want to hear it.
That, that thing has a life of its own. It moves of its own volition. Trust it. I, I think I'm just torn. I appreciate the notion of forward movement and I do think that just that there's some realities that. Listen, if we start to find that we are indeed being taken over by invasive and disruptive signs, we can continue to amend the ordinance in the future. So I I don't know. I, I can follow the will of the group on this. I, I just.
Are we able to talk to Eric and then do a vote by email like tomorrow? See if taking this.
That would be the provisional vote that George suggested. So in theory, if I'm correct, we vote to theoretically approve the ordinance without, with the dynamic signs needing a special permit. Assuming that Eric didn't have anything that would get in that, in our way. It gets approved, signed by the chair. If Eric has reason to not agree, then the chair also has reason to withdraw that motion from being sent forward and then it goes back to us next month.
Then it does what?
It would come back to us next meeting as that motion was not approved.
Right. But, but at that point, it's, it's like the, the, the city council's already met and decided one way or the other. We have to, I think, I think.
Because Eric isn't here, we don't. We don't have an option. I mean, our other option is like, we just, let's table this for next meeting. It gets pushed and we don't talk about it.
I mean, unless we're unless we're willing to go forward regardless of what Eric has to say. George, you give me a vote on.
Well, I I I do see that, you know, Eric's not. The ultimate decider necessarily, but what's the substantive change, as he said that it could be and he wasn't considering all the. Aspects we are right now, how are all the variables, you know, I'm fine with suggesting that we. To err on the side of it, having a a solid process and. That we watch out for unintended consequences as far as, you know, not anticipating certain variables. That we withdraw at this point, but make it a high priority to move this forward or again to reinitiate this process quickly. Cause I I do think there are changes in here, we want to have happen quickly that we're we're clear about, but I. I do think it only going before the city council one time makes more sense. So I would suggest we withdraw it. And and I don't know, needs to be a motion. Okay, that's my that's my motion, we withdraw it, but then, uh, you know, make it a high priority to. Come back with a revised version quickly.
I'll second that. All right, Charles Roberts.
Do we want further discussion, Charles?
Further discussion.
Okay.
All right. So.
Hi.
George.
Hi.
Mark, Molly.
Hi.
Daddy Hussy. Oh, wait, sorry, David Chichester.
Did I yield to Natty?
You could if you want, I have to demote you first.
I do not, I do not have a good grasp on this, so.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to lower David to his alternate status and I'm going to.
All the time.
Raise Daddy to his to his vaunted station. Who he deserves.
Gosh, thanks, um, ju- uh, hi. And also a point of order, can we just make sure that my attendance is recorded as being after the initial, thank you, okay, yes.
Got it in there, Daddy.
Yep. Emily.
Hi.
Okay, and me, Charles, hi, okay, so. Initiative withdrawn, I'll let Eric know tomorrow. And he can stop the process.
Okay.
All right, now we get to talk about GIS.
If I may, uh, Mr. Chair. It is seven forty. I don't know if everyone had, because I did send this out late last night, I don't know if everyone has had the opportunity to go through it on their own. This could be a ten minute thing, it could get to be forty minutes depending on how deep you guys want to go, so. Emily.
I was gonna say, I love your tutorial, thank you, I've already used it like four times today. That being said, the tutorial was kind of like all that I felt I needed to like. Learn how to use it, like, yes, there's so much more that I need to learn from it, but I'm good with either like. Your lovely tutorial or a ten minute spiel.
How about, how about, why why don't, why don't we, why don't we do a a ten minute spiel on a theoretical subject property and just see what you can do with it?
Do that.
Like, what would be a good subject property?
Natty, thank you very much for sending that, by the way.
Yeah.
It'll it'll allow me to practice, so I've I've gotten through part of it, very helpful.
It's fun if you if you get deep into it, um, why don't I just uh. Share my screen and I can, unless someone else would like to, um, and run through a property that they would like to look at.
I already creeped on all my neighbors.
That was the intent.
Is that going into the minutes, Emily?
Hey Daddy, are you able to grab the screen?
Uh, yes, can you see my screen now?
No, I'm gonna have to assign you privileges, I thought I had done that, but I didn't apparently.
Gosh, okay.
But you took them back from Steve.
Okay, see if you can do it now.
Share.
I'm not going to be taking minutes on this, guys, because.
Okay. For some reason.
Yeah, it's not letting me on my end either.
Let me see. I'm gonna re- I'm gonna reset to default, apply. Now I'm gonna say, Daddy. Okay, try it now. Not working.
Hold on, I think I got it. Oh no, I'm telling me I have to leave the meeting in order to have that go.
Oh, that's a drag.
Yeah. Yeah, let me jump out real quick, I'll jump back in.
Okay. See if he gets back in or not. Everybody do the um. Conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest?
Test.
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
It's tricky, isn't it?
Probably do, I'll get it done.
It's super tricky, I I it's not as easy as I remember it being.
Say, anyone else think that his saying he had to leave the meeting to do this was a fake out?
I mean, he did point out that it was seven forty.
Yeah. It's not, I was afraid he might not be able to get back in.
Knowing at me.
Ah, here's.
All right, let me just try again here. There you go. You're you're muted, Daddy.
I will say I really appreciate your comment of don't copy paste, because I tried to copy paste like six times until I read that one footnote right below it.
There we go, yeah, I I it gets me every time.
Okay.
And sometimes if you've typed in an address before. It will copy and it won't let you just click on it because it won't actually go to it, but. That is neither here nor there, so um doesn't, does someone have an address they'd like to look at? Um, or I can just pick one.
Forty-six Kenwood Street.
Forty-six Kenwood Street.
A random choice.
Doesn't exist, all right, so um i- if I'm gonna just. Assume that everyone has gone through the tutorial, um, and so we'll get a little bit deeper on this, so. I'm looking at this property to purchase. I also am aware of how much it's going to cost me in homeowners insurance, so I decide I want to buy a house that's. Close to a fire hydrant, I think it's a thousand feet that gets you the. That insurance cost discount, so I go over to the left side of the screen, usually the the default is property. That's where you can find the butters list, look at the property card, I'm gonna go over to layers, uh, and I'm gonna click on hydrants. I see that there's a hydrant uh that pops up right here, two houses down. I then go up to this bar in the top, um, this is area, I believe, measure the area, this is how. How what scale you're looking at, but I want to go to this one, the measuring device, so. I'm not, I don't recall if it has to be the corner of your property or the corner of the building, um, but click once. And then click again to get, actually, you don't have to click, but then you can get the distance to the fire hydrant, so hundred and fifteen feet. Should be within the distance to get that um insurance benefit. If you keep clicking, you're gonna start doing that, all you gotta do is go up to that bar again, click it and you're clear. Pretty easy there. One of the uh. Bonus questions, I guess, was find out what your the di- dimensions of your sewer line are that run down the street, so. Again, we'll be over here in the layers, go to sewer group. And now we'll look at that, this is an eight inch VC, I'm not sure what the VC stands for, but it's an eight inch diameter pipe. Depending on what street you live on. Determines the capacity of that's needed, which then determines the diameter of the pipe. Um, so you can look around, whoop, sorry, I just zoomed, be careful when you are zooming out. Much better to use the actual zoom function here. To find that, so most of the residential neighbors are are an eight inch pipe. So we're gonna get rid of that, um, we'll get rid of the fire hydrants again, but then. What's that?
They show building footprints?
Yes, they do, uh, it's down here, building two thousand seventeen Microsoft. Um, and for reference, when you go into the layers, there are three that are default, one is the road name. The parcel address and then the parcel. I believe it's the actual parcel itself, the the brown outline that you're looking at. So under parcel about three down, you go to building two thousand seventeen Microsoft and that will populate. What is the proposed, and I say proposed very lightly, um, footprint of the building as of two thousand seventeen. If we go over to Birch Street. See here. I am, this is my home right here, one fourteen Birch. Oh, I did it again. My apologies. If you look at this building footprint here, it's a perfect square, which is incorrect, there is a bump out on my house that is the kitchenette and basement. So not only is there no chance that it was ever a square, but it actually, the foundation is that footprint as well. My neighbor here put in a shed, that's not on there, uh, so I'm not sure if. The data from two thousand seventeen is derived from aerial photography and then just puts a building footprint and it's very rough. Or if that is updated from the assessor's office and what they have as buildings. It will likely change in the next few years, right now it's just two thousand and seventeen. Let's see here. Those are some of the cooler tricks, but you can also look at street view, um, which I had you do in this. If you, if this is too much for you, it's generally too much for me, I like to uh remove some of these items. So now effectively with aerial and info, I'm looking at Google Maps. Um, if you want to go back to the street view, you get the cool um Google car that drives around and takes a picture of your. You know, of your house. If you are looking at the map and you want to determine which. Tax. Block, I think it's called, you can also click on the tax maps. And then choose a map to look at, so we'll go with tax map number three. And it will populate, there we go. So this gives you the actual tax map that's used by the assessor's office and the taxing authority. In uh in their offices, that's a separate.
Can you, can you add layers to this also, or is that um?
No, there are no, you don't have the ability to run a query, so, you know, for example, back to the. Uh, what was it, the uh sewer, for example, or was that? Yeah, all right, so sewer group, I can't query only eight inch pipes across the city and only look at those. That's not, that's not an option with this, um, that would be additional software. But, for example, so looking at my, I did it again. Every time. Uh, if I want to determine the dimensions of my property, it's going to be very rough. But that's what this tool is here. The area tool. Right next to the straight line. And so now I have a rough area of my property, fourteen thousand two hundred square feet. Which. If then you can cross-reference that with the actual property card. Which again, you just click on the property and then go to property card, gives you a new browser window. And then that shares with you the square footage of the property itself. Or it should, well, gives you, it gives it an acres, not in square feet, but you just got to run the calculation.
Forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty.
There you go. One thing that might be interesting is in this layers, if you run through the water features, so watershed boundaries, sub-basins, aquifers, natural. Flood hazards, so the ones I'm clicking here. Most areas in town, you're not going to see anything happen, so you have to be zoomed out, but you can then go and look in those areas, what properties. Have a wetland, what ones are bordering a body of water, um, so it's helpful in knowing the surroundings of the property when particularly if you're looking on Google Maps. You're only going to get the foliage and you're not going to see what's underneath it. The other interesting part of this is you can also look at farmland, so prime farmland areas. Which my house is on great farmland, but can't farm in my basement, so. Uh, that's a an interesting feature, if we ever get into talking about properties, sort of what had been talked about in terms of development. Then we can very quickly see, okay, which pro- which soil, which areas of town. Have prime farmland and which one just have normal farmland, um, and then we can, that can help us make our decision. If, so if we're looking over here, and I'm sorry, it is quite small, if on prime farmland soils. If I click on the I, there's an I and a T and we get a. An oops, but the I is generally an information about whatever that layer is, so prime farmland, the I would. Would tell you, would give you a definition of what prime farmland actually means per the state. Um, if you click on T, that's transparency, so I can make, right now I'm making the farmland as transparent as uh. Visible as possible, and if I slide this the other way, it makes it transparent, so depending on how. Much you need that tool, that is also an option.
Does it have topography?
Uh, yes, I believe it has contours, three meters. So you can see that here, I'll turn off the.
That's like ten foot contours.
Yeah, nine and nine and a half, something like that, so it's not extremely accurate. But. You know, it it makes more sense if you're looking at something like uh the west side of Greenfield. Towards Route Two, you know, where the terrain is much steeper. Yeah, so. I could geek out on this stuff all day, this is what my my side job is creating maps with layers, uh. Side job, my desired side hustle is what I guess I would call it, um, but yeah, if you guys have any questions now, we can, we can take a couple. Whatever you want to do.
Just in general, this has been super informative, thank you so much, Daddy, like I said, I've already used it like four times and once for work, so.
Nice. Nice, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's really great to have all this information, just kind of like right there and, you know, there's, there's.
I live in a condo at Silvercrest and there's not as much information about condos. So I was kind of disappointed with what I was able to learn about my house.
You mean in terms of attributes of the actual property itself or being able to see what's happening in the development?
To be able to see what's happening in the development, but. But you had warned us about that to begin with.
Right. Any new development isn't going to be on here. It's going to probably take a year at least. For any construction, new construction to be on here or. Longer if it's something like farmland, changes to farmland or wetlands, those would probably take a couple of years, if not more. So.
That's interesting.
Great. All right, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Very helpful.
It'll be very helpful, yeah.
I appreciate you supplementing what you sent out earlier with a live walkthrough. It's really, really helps.
Nothing quite like it.
Yeah, it's good times.
Thank you. So discussion items, planning board initiatives, we're still waiting for FERC, Eric hasn't heard anything yet. But hopefully we're. They're, they're. Everybody else.
Charles, you're turning away from your mic a bit.
I'll be like, like everybody else. They got a lot of stuff going on. Any board and staff reports?
Yeah, I can just briefly say the master plan. Implementation committee. At the last meeting, we focused quite a bit on the downtown. Deliberate downtown initiative that's going on, including the. Look at Main Street. And some. You know, properties of interest there and. And also the change that's going to be happening in the relative near future with the the street itself. And there was additional public input encouraged. So we had a few people who came and spoke focused on issues like. Tree trees, the Fisk Avenue Park, which is going to be very interesting to have that come to final fruition. Yeah, and also about the arts organizations and. And then next. We're going to kind of continue that as part of the meetings monthly. We're going to have a particular focus next month on. The parking and bike lanes among Main Street and Jeff Sausser is going to be a guest. Speaker. And we're also going to be looking to have Susan Wargovnik, who's been very involved with the housing organization. Come at some time in the near future as well. So just want to give a sense of what's going on in that committee.
Thanks, George. Emily.
I can only tell so many people, but I'm getting married.
All right.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Only so many people can tell, so.
Got a date set?
September second.
Right, that's a beautiful time of year.
I hear the weather's gonna be nice.
Yeah. Yeah, should be good, should be good. Dan says it's gonna rain for sure, but.
Have a ten.
Congratulations, very nice.
Thank you, thank you. I have to be excited at summer.
Yeah, that's great. So next meeting date, two weeks from today, that'll be the seventeenth.
Oh, that's St. Patrick's Day, guys.
Happy's Day.
Have you seen this red hair?
I'm sure to celebrate.
So so getting. Getting back to the signage thing, do we want to try to do have that be on the agenda to reinvigorate our exploration of that or?
Sure, I can, I can talk to Eric about that.
Keep our momentum.
Yeah, I'll call him tomorrow. I'm going to let him know what we decided tonight and get that on the agenda. For next time. I mean, hopefully we can, I mean, I would like to think that we could. We could, we could craft the language, you know, with Eric and kind of like one sitting and then he can, he can initiate it and get it out there and. And we'll have a public hearing probably within, you know. Maybe maybe we can have a public hearing within like our first. Meeting in April.
I find it's the kind of thing when you have something that you haven't had in your ordinance before, seeing other, I can't remember if we had. Other examples of dynamic display signs, if Eric had shared that with us.
I don't remember seeing one.
I don't think so. We did last, the last one I remember was for the courier versus.
Right.
And I don't know his bandwidth, but. Whether. Maybe we can ask Jenny Disorga as a planning board emeritus to do a lot of research.
Yeah, right. I don't, I don't mind checking, you know, I'm in North Hampton zoning all the time. I don't mind checking their ordinance to see if they have anything.
Nice. Thank you. When you're doing something new, it's always good to borrow and steal good stuff from other people.
It is good. Borrow and steal. It's already been done.
Right.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
If unanimous, no roll call required.
Can we elevate Dave again so we can vote for all six of us vote?
I can handle that one. All right, well, another, another good meeting. Thank you all so much and we'll see you next time around.